Welcome to the Town Hall Meeting at Northside Baptist Church. This is an exciting day for us as a church family. We believe that this will be something that we'll look back on and remember. And as a day of excitement and thrill, knowing what God has done for us. As the deacons and trustees, of course, and I as the pastor, we're praying for unity in all this. God would give us a great understanding of what we need to do moving forward together as a church family to accomplish God's will. God has provided us with 34 beautiful acres. And it's an amazing thing to think of, what God has done over the past few years. Highway 190 has now become Interstate 14. We have had new exits placed out on I-14 that lead people directly to us. We have a bridge that comes across the interstate right to our front door. And God has provided beautifully for us in this property. There were some things about this property that were not a reality, that God has turned into a reality, that have made this property usable, where we can move forward together as a church family and accomplish what God's given us to do. We know our cause. Our cause is the Great Commission. It's great because it's from the Lord. There are no stops to it if we depend upon the Lord. There are obstacles, and we'll talk about those in just a little bit, and I'll present those to you. But we believe that God can overcome all obstacles, and we trusting Him for this. I want to ask Brother Patrick Shelburne to come, if he would. He serves as one of our deacons. I appreciate our deacons. These are fine men that love the Lord. They're faithful men. They're men with wisdom and understanding, and I'm grateful to be able to lean upon them and to receive help and instruction. All of them have been working diligently with me upon what we're presenting to you today. We've been diligently at this for a year and a half of preparation. God has just been faithful to lead us from one thing to the next and to remove obstacles, and we're so delighted in it. And we're looking forward to sharing what God has done in our meetings and with those that are helping us in this meeting, this Town Hall meeting. So thank you for being here. But Shelburne, if you don't mind, please lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you in your Son, Jesus Christ's name, dear heavenly Father. There's no other name on the heaven where we must be saved. It's also with heavenly Father, as we come to this Town Hall Meeting, dear heavenly Father, that we're trusting you. We're trusting you. We cannot do this of ourselves. We believe in you. I pray to heavenly Father that everything that's said and done be clear and in clarity, and that everything be according to your will. We want your will in all this, dear heavenly Father. We can't do it on our own. There's no way. It's too great, and we have to depend on you. We love you, dear heavenly Father. Bless our time, dear heavenly Father. I pray that we all be on one accord, that the Holy Spirit is already blessing us through all of this, and let's not see what we can't do. We serve a mighty, mighty God. We, all things are possible. And in Philippians, it tells us that, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens us." So let us be strengthened by you. We love you, dear heavenly Father. For your Son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Shelburne. Appreciate these men. Wonderful. We're glad you're here. Thank you for being here. We hope that as we move forward here together, God will give us a good understanding as we labor together. I want to share with you, if I could, just the agenda of this meeting. I want to prepare your heart and mind for some things. The first thing I'm going to do is share with you, when we know our cause, we have to encourage our cause with Scripture. We believe God. We're not in it alone, so I want to share with you where we are looking to in Scripture to help us through this time and this period and this plan. And I have a special gift for all of you. This is from our church. We hope you'll enjoy it. I'll deal with the master plan, of course, and the balcony expansion, and what the Lord has for us there. And then I want you to know, there's an opportunity for questions, and I'm going to work diligently through this so that we can have questions from the floor. If you have a question, we want you to be able to ask it for clarity's sake. And I want you to know as well that this five minutes that we'll have or so at the conclusion of this will not be the only opportunity that you have to ask questions. I will be available to you to answer any questions that you have anytime. You can call me. You can call the church office. You can ask me after services. I'll be happy to share information with you. These men, our deacons and trustees, are prepared. They have knowledge and understanding. We've worked through this together. They've sat in the meetings. They've heard the architects and planners and builders. And so they're fully capable of answering your questions as well. And if there is a question that we cannot answer, we'll do our very best to get that answer for you as quickly as we possibly can and communicate that back to you. So I want you to know this agenda. If I could, for just a moment, try to encourage our calls this morning with some Scripture. If you have your Bible, 2 Chronicles, Chapter 20, and verse number 20, tells us, it's a result, it's the end result of God's people and their faith in God. 2 Chronicles, Chapter 20, and verse number 20, we know this scenario. I preached it last Sunday morning in our service. Jehoshaphat is the king of Judah. This is the southern kingdom of Israel. There's three armies that are prepared to come against them. Two of them are allied together. One is acting independent. Both of these, or all three of these armies, are greater than the armies of Judah. You remember at this time, the nation of Israel is divided in the northern and the southern kingdom. They've had civil war, and so they're depleted. As a matter of fact, the Bible even says about Jehoshaphat's reign, that his kingdom grew. In other words, the kingdom wasn't quite established as it had been in the past. The children of Israel had sinned. They've not experienced obedience to the Lord. They've had good kings and bad kings. And so the kingdom is on an up and a down. It's on an up at this point, but it has been in a down position, and they're concerned about these armies that are coming upon them. It's even told us that two of the armies have already made their way into their land and are positioned in a city called Ingety. How in the world did they not already know this? It's beyond my understanding, and it was beyond Jehoshaphat's understanding. We understand that Jehoshaphat did the right thing. He turned to the Lord, and he encouraged the children of Israel to believe in the Lord your God. There's some things that we understand about all of this, that if you don't mind helping me, thank you, about believing in the Lord our God. When we are up against trials and up against burdens and obstacles, we understand that obstacles are only opportunities to see God at work. We've seen the Lord at work in what we're preparing for you today and presenting to you today. We've had some obstacles to our property. Matter of fact, it was about a year and a half ago that our planners and builders told us that we need to sell this campus and find a new campus, because there were things that would not be available for us here regarding sewer and the floodplain and those types of things. God has made available sewer to us on this property. We're grateful to God. He's led us to the right people that could help us. It's going to cost us, but we'll have it here, and we believe it's a worthy investment on this property and for us to move forward to accomplish what God's given us to do. And God has done some mighty things regarding the floodplain. We're right now in the middle, about, maybe we're two or three months into a seven-month study on the floodplain, and they're telling us that we're going to be able, most likely, to move that floodplain line that is creeping upon us, to be able to present and put some buildings on property here which could not have been done otherwise. And so we're grateful to God for that. We've seen God financially provide for us as we've been dealing with soft costs. Soft costs like paying engineers and architects to draw up these plans. Soft costs like doing the floodplain study. We're grateful to God for His provision financially to do those things. We've not really had to ask you for much help regarding that. God just continues to supply. Not asking you for help is going to change very soon. I just want to be very clear on that. There are some obstacles that we're up against financially, of course. It's going to require all of us to do our part in unity, and we fully believe that God will supply, because He's a God who can. And so when we have our mounting burden, what are we to do? Well, we are facing challenges. We understand that there are some things where we have no might. We're totally dependent upon God to provide for us. I don't know where the funds are going to come from, and I don't know what lies ahead, but I do know that there's a God who knows all things and who will not leave us alone. And just as Jehoshaphat said to the children of Judah, he says, "We know not what to do." Well, we're not going to just sit around and twiddle our thumbs. God gave them clear direction as to what they were to do, and we're going to move forward as God leads us along forward. And so there is a response, and there is a managed response. Jehoshaphat told the children of Israel, "We'll set our face to seek the Lord." And I believe we're doing that here. We've sought the Lord in everything. Every meeting we've had with planners and builders and architects, we've begun with prayer, asking God's hand of blessing. The men that we've been working with and the ladies, our Christians, know that they've accepted Christ as their Savior, and we've been dependent upon the Lord, and God's been faithful to us. And can I say, church family, we all want to set our face to seek the Lord. I need you to set your face to seek the Lord. There's going to be things asked of you, and you're going to have to have the mind of the Lord to know what to do. What else are we going to do? What is our managed response? Well, we're going to ask help of the Lord. It is God who hears and helps. Then we're going to keep our eyes on the Lord. We don't need a new program. We know that the just shall live by faith, and it's our faith in the Lord. There is a reward for them that diligently seek the Lord, and that reward is joy. It is peace. It is God's fellowship. And we want the Lord's fellowship and His peace and His presence throughout all that we do here. Then we're going to see some mighty results, no doubt about it. What will these mighty results be? Well, we know that God will hear, and He will help, because God hears and answers prayer, doesn't He? He sure does. We know that the battle's the Lord's. This work is the work of the church. I didn't start the church. The church was started with the Lord Jesus Christ and His disciples, and was empowered at Pentecost. This is the Lord's work, and so it's the Lord's battle. What else will He do? What will be our results? The Lord will be with us. We're going to get to see God do mighty things, the things that we thought were impossible. We said, "We have no help. We know not what to do. Lord, we don't have the might or the power. What in the world are we going to do against these obstacles?" Well, we're going to see the Lord at work, and He'll be with us. And what will He do? The Bible says in 2 Chronicles, Chapter 20, and verse number 20, "Believe in the Lord your God, and so shall ye be established." He'll establish us. And then he says, "Believe his prophets." At that point in history, the prophets were the word of God. They were the message of God to God's people. So what are we going to do? We're going to encourage our cause with the word of God, and the Bible says, "And so shall ye prosper." The Lord told Joshua that if he'll stay in the book, keep His words, keep His law, that God will make His way prosperous, and then he'll have good success. Now, look, things may change. I may drop dead. These men may drop dead. We may face some obstacles we weren't expecting in the economy. Things may change, but God will never fail us. He has never failed, and He will not fail us. It's important that we have unity as we move forward together, and so this is our managed response. We have a special gift for you that we want you to have, and it's a journal. These men are prepared to help me this morning as we're working through all of this together. And I'm sorry that I'm moving quickly, but I do want to give you opportunity at the conclusion of this to ask any questions and to examine some things. These men are coming. They have a gift for everyone in attendance here that's sixth grade and up. I want you to have this. We think it'll encourage your Christian life. It's our annual journal. It goes along with the theme that I just presented to you about believing in the Lord our God. There's some Bible promises in here that you'll discover that will help you to know the Lord and His will regarding matters of obstacles to be strengthened. There's a number of things in here. I want you to get this. If you'll open it up, you'll take a look at the beautiful cover, and I'm thankful for those that worked on this, but the Ball of Kitas led this project. An absolutely fabulous job for us. But this journal is something. Often when I come to the preaching, I'll say, "If you have something to write on and something to write with..." Well, now you do, and I'll be looking for them, right? Students? No, I'm teasing, of course. But we want you to have this. It's a special gift to you. We want it to be a commemorative thing for you and to help you throughout the year. If you'll open it up, I think the very first thing we need to do is please take time now to put your name in your journal, all right? We're handing out about 500 of these throughout our year, and so there's going to be 500 of them floating around that look just like yours. And so if you'll put your name, your address, your phone number, and your email. If you lose your journal, or misplace it, or somebody else picks it up, if you're looking for it, we do have a lost and found here in our building. It's in our auditorium just behind, kind of in the ushers area and the media booth. If you lose it, that would probably be the best place to look. Any that we find, we'll gather and we'll put in that lost and found. And so hopefully you won't have too many to look through before you find your own. But please take time now to put your name on it. I'd like to walk you through the table of contents, and maybe you can turn in your book and look through these things. But the first thing you're going to find on page number two is 2 Chronicles, Chapter 20, and verse number 20. I want you to get familiar and encourage your heart about what the Lord is able to do. And so we've given you the Scripture there. You turn on to page number four, you're going to find 30 New Testament promises from the word of God. God has made His promise to us. We want to encourage our hearts in the Lord. I don't know what you're facing either, so I've put together a little list of Bible promises for specific situations. And so you see, maybe if you put one of these things in your heart each day, it'll encourage you to believe in the Lord your God. You turn to page number six, you're going to find the Bible reading plan. This is an annual plan for you, and so I think you'll enjoy it. There is some, there's a morning section for reading and an evening section for reading. You get some of the Old Testament. You get some of the books of poetry, like the Book of Psalms and Proverbs and that. And then you get some New Testament reading in the evening time. You continue on to page number 12. I want you to see this. This is our doctrinal statement of our Northside Baptist Church. This is what we believe. This is our beliefs. And so if there's ever a question that someone asks you about what the Bible says about a certain matter, you can turn right here to page 12 and 13, and you'll find our doctrinal statement. This is taken from the word of God, and in each one of these, we have the Bible reference to help you to discover these truths. And so we have this. If you'll turn to page number 14, I've put this tool in here to help you, to help people who come to our church, visit our church, attend our church. The first part is joining Northside Baptist Church. Often people want to know, "How do I join the church?" Well, I've given you the answers here. There's three ways to join our church. Then others want to know about baptism. Let's imagine someone is sitting beside you in the service, and they watch somebody get baptized, and they say, "You know, I need to get baptized." Well, you have the information right here to walk through them about this matter of baptism and encourage them and help them to be obedient to the Lord. We see the biblical meaning. We see baptism is by immersion. We see it's a public declaration, and then we see what believer's baptism is. I've also given you the gospel on page number 15. If you're sitting beside somebody, and the Holy Spirit puts it upon you to ask them if they know Christ as Savior, you can share the gospel with them right here. Then if you look on page number 16, this begins our annual calendar. It's an annual calendar that you can use for your own life, if you'd like to, but it has the church events on it, the main events of our church. Of course, there's other events, Sunday School events and things of that nature, and baby showers and that type of thing that will come up. We've given you the main calendared events. Of course, here on January the 12th, we're right in beginning our vision revival. We're praying for Brother Dan Knickerbocker. I would like for you to see, on February the 16th, we have what we're calling a Community Friends Sunday. I want you to begin now inviting people in the community that are your friends. I have friends that help me every day with my breakfast. These are folks that work at McDonald's, and these are folks that work at Whataburger, right? And they help me every day. They provide something for me, and I want to bring them on this Community Friends Sunday, and I want to encourage them to come, and we'll recognize them publicly for their service in the community. I'm going to be inviting the mayor and our community leaders to this meeting. This is a great opportunity for you. Maybe you have someone that you always look for at a grocery store, or maybe there's someone that does your hair, or your nails, or works on your car. This would be a great opportunity for you to begin inviting people to this Community Friends Sunday, okay? I'd like for you to turn to March. In March 2nd through the 5th, we have a big meeting here. It's our first annual Southwest Bible Conference. The Southwest Bible Conference is a meeting we're trying to have. We're praying for 50 pastors to be here, because we believe there's a work that needs to be done in our region of starting churches. We've started the Central Texas Church Planning Ministry here, that Brother Brian Jaeger leads. We have a desire. We've identified 19 cities in the Central Texas region, and that's not all of them, that need an independent Baptist church just like this one. And so we're working at this, and we're beginning planning and preparation. We've already had one man come and start a church. We have another man. I just talked to him last night, and he reached out to me last night about coming on a survey trip here at the end of January. I'm trying to get him here to the church. He's trying to do his very best. We're going to sit down. We're going to talk about church planning in the Central Texas region. He's praying about doing that. He believes God's already called him to this region. We're trying to help him identify a city that he could go to to start a church just like this. I want you to pray for this. We believe this meeting will be a catalyst to get other pastors involved in starting churches in our area. These church planners are going to need support. They're going to need encouragement. They're going to need help. And if we can unify and unite other pastors, I think it'll be a great blessing. If you continue on, there's plenty of events, but go to June, if you would, with me, please. You see Vacation Bible School is already on the map. Of course, in May, we had Mother's Day and all those special days. We're giving you this so that you can begin building your annual calendar around what's going on at the church and be inviting folks. The month of July, you notice, our young people are going to the America's Youth Congress. This takes place in Powell, Tennessee. We'll also have some special celebrations at our church on the 2nd for our Independence Celebration. There's a Young Adult Retreat at Lake Texoma Baptist Youth Camp. Then we also have our teens going to camp, so you have all these dates. There's a Biblical Parenting Seminar scheduled on July the 24th. We hope you'll make plans to be a part of all of this. So many things are happening. The month of August, of course, NSBA begins. The academy begins their first day. And you'll notice in the month of September, we have the Deep in the Heart of Texas Marriage Conference. Just some simple dates. If we continue on, you see Veterans Day, all these things. Then when you come to page number 40, you're going to find notes. This is opportunities for you to take notes and write down things that God speaks to your heart about as the preaching is going on. When you work your way through the notes pages, you'll also see some advertisements at the bottom of some of these notes pages that are strategically placed. We believe they'll come up about the time you reach that page, just to remind you about some of the events that are on the calendar, whether it be the Basic Training Youth Conference, the Marriage Conference, or the Biblical Parenting Seminar, and some of the different events that we have going on. When you come to page 196, you'll discover some other advertisements, but I'd like for you to take a look at page 197, if you would. Page 197, my wife and I have been working together to produce a podcast. We're trying to get Bible truth into every corner of your home. We'll be speaking, and we are speaking on subjects and matters. We're talking about our life and our marriage. We're talking about raising children. We're talking about how to have devotions. We're sharing Bible truths. It would be an encouragement and help to you in your marriage and your relationships, and how to talk to one another, and how to raise kids, and expectations that Christian parents ought to have on children. We have special guests that are part of our podcast. This will be launching the end of January. You may discover a website on this. I believe it's live, but there's not much content yet. That'll all launch on January. We're planning to launch with a good supply, the end of January, a good supply of podcasts already available to you to get you hooked, and then we'll be producing new podcasts each week, and so we hope that you'll be a part of all those. When you come to page 198 and 199, we've listed all of the ministries of our church. These are, what you find here are these ministry rack cards. Those are also available in live form in the lobby. If you know someone that's interested, or if you're interested in getting involved or want more information about a certain ministry, you can go to that ministry rack card. You can find it in the lobby on the backs of QR code, or you can fill out the "I'm Interested" section on the back of that. Turn that in, the offering plate, or give it to the office, and you can get more information regarding that. We've provided the QR code for you as well, and it'll put you in direct contact. If you're looking for a Sunday School class and you fill this out, we'll put you in direct contact with a Sunday School teacher that fits your life stage, and they'll contact you, reach out to you, and you can get registered for the Sunday School Hour, or whatever ministry it might be. There's other ministries. We have some family resources on page 200 and 201. And then, of course, our website is beautifully designed. It can be used for you to use as a tool as you're out in the community witnessing. Every section of our website has "I want more information" or "I'm interested," and you can actually get prospects if you're out witnessing, or if you have someone at work that's looking to be a part of a ladies' Bible study, or a senior St. Sunday School class, or a youth department, or whatever the case may be. You can go to our website. You can get them registered right there. There's, at the top of our website is an "Everything" button. It's a menu of our entire website, so you don't have to try to navigate the roads and figure out what turn to take on every page. If you hit the "Everything" button, there's a menu for everything that our church provides, and you can find everything right there. Click on it, open it up, and there'll be a "I'm Interested" button on every single page, and you can get people registered for that, all right? If you have questions about what the ministry is all about, click that page. Let us know, and we'll reach out to you quickly. I've given you a little challenge on the back that I hope will be an encouragement to you, and I hope this journal will be a help to your Christian life, all right? And so I'm praying for you, and we hope you enjoy this gift. This is from our church, all right? Very good. I want to move on quickly, if I could. We've got about 15 to 20 minutes here. I want to talk with you about our master plan and our balcony expansion project. These images reflect the boards that are in front of you here. These boards will be placed in the lobby at the conclusion of this meeting. You'll find the top image is a picture of our sanctuary. It'd be from the side view over here. This kind of shows you the elevation of the balcony. There's five rows that'll be to the balcony. The balcony will seat 108 seats, and there will be stairwells coming down both sides of the balcony in the auditorium, so you don't have to use the current existing stairwells to access the balcony. We believe that this is important for folks responding to the gospel call in our church. We don't want them to have to leave the sanctuary to come in. We want them to have full access to the altars and to get the help that's needed. The picture at the bottom, I'm not quite sure how they're showing here, but gentlemen, I'm sorry. We have these bulletins. Can we get these bulletins in their hands? These will give you live and upfront images of these images here. And you can have this, keep it, put it in your Bible, put it with your prayer journal, and I want to encourage you to begin praying about all these things. Let me give you just a minute to get these out to these men and women here in our meeting. Wonderful. Maybe we can just hand them stacks, and they can distribute them down the aisle. That would be great. We're so excited about what the Lord is doing here. God will allow us. Currently, we have 381 seats on the main floor. There are 44 chairs in the choir loft, and we have 10 chairs or so in the orchestra. This gives us a capacity of 425. This balcony remodel, and then also an adjustment of seats down here with new fixed seats, updated seats, will allow us then to have an increase of 201 seats within this auditorium. So it'll give us a little bit of room. It'll allow for growth. We think this is absolutely necessary for moving forward. You'll notice in your bulletin, these images and the balcony here I've given to you, you can kind of see the view from the pulpit facing back, the view that I would have, and you see that work there. I don't know that I've given you in the bulletin what we call the material palette, but that would be the paint color and the carpet and the pews and the seats and that kind of thing, or at least the row ends is what we were calling them. That's available for you here. It is on one of these boards, and you'll get to see that. Not much is changing. We are updating this color here to be a slight variation. The sides of the auditorium in the back will be painted the similar color as the lobby, so to kind of brighten it up a little bit. The carpet will change, the tone really will not, but it'll have a Damascus pattern. We believe that it's beautiful. The chairs, I've given you pictures of the material that will be on the chairs. You can kind of see that tone. And then, of course, each row will have an end cap. We think this will help and bring some beauty to the auditorium. There'll be book holders and all of that here for us. So we want you to have that and to see that. I've given you an overview as well of the auditorium, both first floor and second floor. If you come to these boards, you'll find these details that are presented on this slide. You don't have those details. There just wasn't enough room in that brochure to give you those details, but you'll get to see where the paint's going and where the carpet's going and all those types of things. It's probably going just where you imagine it would go, right? Carpet goes on the... Yeah, see, look, we're together in this. This is exciting. We want you to have all of this. And so, we're grateful for what God is doing. Again, our new seat count, I've given that to you in the bulletin. You can see the fixed seats. There'll also be some movable and removable seats. But in our max capacity, if we were to put all the seats in, it would be 626 seats, as opposed to the 425 seats that we currently have in this auditorium. This is exciting for us. It's an opportunity for growth, for us to invite people and to begin filling this up and training and teaching new people the Word of God. I've given you a master plan. This master plan is only tilted. This is a vertical. I've given you a horizontal on the back of your brochure. You can see the master plan there and its phases. And we will phase this out. The phases may change, some things may change. I've given a little disclaimer at the bottom. We're currently, like I said, about 30 or 40% through the floodplain study, and the engineers are working on that. And they believe that they can move the floodplain. And so, we've given our very best foot forward regarding what we think can take place. There may be some little adjustments that need to take place, but we believe that this is very possible to take place. And so, you see the things here, you see it phased out. I think I've given it to you, maybe a little small for you there, but we've given that to you here on these foam boards for your examination as well, alright? We're excited about all of this. Of course, the first thing we're planning to do is to remodel this auditorium and to make the balcony a realization. And moving forward, Lord willing, we're working to, we're in preparation to draw up plans for a gymnasium that will also have classrooms, locker rooms, a full-sized kitchen for fellowship hall, all those types of things that will be necessary and are necessary currently to help us to accomplish what the Lord has us to do. This will be back, as you can see it, it's back towards the playground. Our desire is to make the back, or it would be the northeast corner of the building, the gymnasium, to have glass windows so that parents and families can be inside watching their children outside on the playground. Of course, the new playground will go, that'll be a, Lord willing, there'll be a pavilion, a covered pavilion that will allow us to do some things outdoors. That will be an extension of the gymnasium, provide some shelter and shade for the young people each day as they have recess, and we think that this will be greatly used by our church. Of course, these ball fields and things are necessary for what we're trying to accomplish in our education. On the back of the bulletin, I've given you our purpose, and I hope you'll see that. It comes from our Constitution. And our purpose, of course, encapsulates everything that's on our master plan. They're cohesive. We believe the Lord has blessed us with the opportunity to educate, not only in a day school, but also in a Sunday School and with discipleship and all these things. And so, we're grateful for this. I'm imagining there's some questions upon your heart and in your mind of things that you're seeing, that maybe just curiosity. Well, we don't want it to kill you, so we want you to have an opportunity to ask these questions. I want to ask our deacons and trustees at this time, if they come forward. They may be able to contribute as well to answering some of your questions, or there may be things that I didn't say, that they would like to say. And they're more than welcome to take the mic at this point and deal with that, okay? And so, let me just begin. We have about 10 minutes, if we take the entire Sunday School Hour, to answer some of your questions. Any questions? Yes, Brother Johnson.
I was just wondering, when my work starts here in the Indian
Yes, we've discussed that with our workers and labors. They believe that they can do in sections and section off the balcony area and do much of that work there, where it won't disrupt us here on our main floor for a while. But then, when there is a disruption, of course, there will be, right? We will move to the Phillips Hall, and we'll set up service there, and we may have to have a Wednesday service in there, or we're going to do our very best to make it all work. Good, great question. Yes, Mrs. Anderson. Question is, how do they move the floodplain? They do what's called a cut and fill. They will take dirt from the volume, basically from the floodplain area, and they will take that dirt and then fill our area that's in the floodplain that we desire to use. So it will push that volume of water to those now areas that have been prepared in the floodplain. Yes, ma'am, just as you assumed. Yes, Mrs. Williams.
I wanted, is there, will there be more restrooms since the church is expanding?
We have not prepared restrooms, but there are restrooms available and will be available within the secured area of the balcony on the second floor that will maintain the balcony. We believe that the restroom facilities on our property are sufficient for the task. But we do know that one area that needs to improve is we're currently on septic tank, and we will be bringing in, and the plans are about 90% done. Of course, with, if, once the floodplain study's finished, we will know exactly where the buildings go. We will be able to solidify, solidify the sewer project. And so, we'll be bringing sewer into the building, which will then be an upgrade to our restroom facilities as well. Yes, Brother Borchers has a question. Yes, sir. Lord willing, on the balcony expansion, we want to begin the day, the Christian day school is out, and we believe that can be accomplished, this remodel can be accomplished during the summer before school begins again. Estimated cost, we're still in the bidding process. And so, we've decided together, we are not sharing some of those bids until we get all those bids in, but we will share that very soon and as quickly as we possibly can, so that we can all be prepared. Yes, Brother Cowan.
If we, if everything goes as planned, what is the estimated date through completion of Phase 3?
If everything goes as planned, what is the estimated completion through Phase 3, right? You're thinking that's the end, but it probably won't be. I'll probably be adding Phase 4, Phase 5, Phase 6, right? Yes, as long as God keeps blessing, and I believe He always will until He comes. But you always think about a one-year, five-year, three, right, 10 years. So we believe that this auditorium remodel will at least facilitate us for three to five years. And so, beginning that auditorium and remodeling of this building entirely to turn it into a school, this would be the Academy then, Assembly Hall, right? And then, we'd build an auditorium that would seat maybe, well, I don't know what it would seat in five years, but we believe upwards of 1,000 people or better. So I'm thinking a five-to-seven-year plan out there regarding this. It may be more. But good, great question. Any other questions? Yes, Brother Brad.
I was just wondering, if through these plans, are we looking at building up rather than building out?
We examine that. We believe... There are some limitations to our height. The further out we get towards the front of our property, we can only go so high near the road. But really, it will not limit us in doing what we want to do, so we can go up. The... Yeah, that's right, yeah. We're not building the Tower of Babel though, Miss Williams. Be careful. Yeah, there's only one way to heaven, that's through Jesus Christ. Amen. But the gymnasium facility obviously would facilitate two-story classrooms, as well as the peak of the gymnasium would exceed even that. We've considered adding a third story to this building. We believe that there was possibly some room above part of this building, but the juice isn't worth the squeeze there. It would disrupt the entire second floor for a year, and it would not allow us to accomplish what we need to accomplish. And so, we won't be going further up in this building, but we will be going second stories in some of the other buildings. Okay? Yes? He asked, is there going to be a moving of buildings? That's a great question. The answer to that is yes. Our maintenance facility currently sits in an area that we believe will be better used by putting a building that will not be hindered or touched by a possible floodplain. And so, we'll be moving the maintenance facility, which also encompasses the Dorcas Building. This is why the Dorcas Building and the maintenance facilities are part of Phase 1. We will be building a new Dorcas Building dedicated for the Dorcas Ministry. And Brother Flippo's looking forward to getting a bus garage that can facilitate the buses and get him totally out of the weather when he works on those buses. And so, we believe in the bus ministry. We want it to move forward, we want it to grow. And in order to do that, of course, the infrastructure has to be there. Any other questions? We're certainly happy, and gentlemen, if you have any statements, yes. Are we going to modify these seats or are we buying new seats? They're new seats, they'll be fixed, and the image is in the brochure that we gave to you. You'll find those there. They will look like pews, but they will be individual seats. They're the largest seat on the market. We did not put armrests on purpose, and they will be spaced out as far as they possibly can be spaced, but yet still facilitate us with growth here. And so, it's amazing what you can do just by changing seats. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, what are the housing units for in Phase 1? Currently, we have single staff that rents homes in our community, and so, we're investing in someone else's property. We would like to turn that investment upon ourselves, and so, we'll be building some housing units. There'll be two-bedroom, two-master bath with a kitchen. That would allow then our staff to use those. If we don't use them for staff housing, we would be able to use them possibly, if the Lord allows us at some point, to start a camp. We could use those for camp dormitories. We could also use those, if the Lord allows us, to have some type of ministry training center here, whether it's for missionaries or church planters. It would allow us to have housing for them. Another part that I'm greatly interested in is I would love to have senior resident housing here on our property. And so, these houses are designed for all three of those needs. And so, we're praying that God will bless all of that. I think it would be a wonderful thing for us to be able to take care of our seniors, have them on the property, keep the maintenance of the buildings. They would rent them. It'd be a great investment for us, it'd be a great help to seniors, and we believe that it would be a real foot forward for us, helping our community to know that Northside Baptist Church cares about the gray head. I spoke with a man just the other day who told me that his church doesn't care about him any longer because he's elderly. And that's a sad part, and I don't want that to be said of Northside. I think it'd be great. There are houses that could be added to that loop that's designed there, and that loop can be extended. And so, we're praying that God will allow us to do that. Thank you for the question. That was a wonderful question. Yes, Mr. Rigan. Praise the Lord. I'm sorry, could you say that again? I missed the first part.
The vision right here is awesome. If I had to put a prayer on my notebook to water every single day like it was a must-receive, it was faith, what would that prayer look like?
Yeah, I think we need to pray for unity. I think we need to pray for God's hand of provision. I think we need to ask God for clear direction regarding sewer and floodplain and buildings and phases. I think we need to ask God to do some miraculous things to let us see God do something wonderful. I'm interested in this generation of young people seeing God at work. And I think every, every generation needs to see God do something miraculous. When I was a, when I was a young man, I got to go off to Bible college there, and the Temple Baptist Church was growing. We carried our own seats into the auditorium and set them down. That's how tight things were. And I got to see a camp property of over 40 acres developed and be used for the Lord's glory. I got to see new auditoriums being built, new facilities for training young people and those that are planning to go into ministry. I got to see new Sunday School classes. I got to see God do some amazing things. And I was on the tail end of all of that, right? I wasn't the one trusting God for the finances. Well, here I am. It's fun to put buildings on paper until they put a price tag on it, right? And then it becomes a reality, and then it becomes total faith. And I want all of us to feel that together as a church. And I want us to see God do some amazing things in our homes. I want God to see, I want these young people to see God do some amazing things, and these children, all the way down to the nursery, all need to be involved in giving and praying and filling this, these buildings that God's going to build here. And we'll stand triumphant, we'll see the Lord, we'll sing His praises, as they did in 2 Chronicles, Chapter 20, and we'll just see God do some amazing things. Brother Dan?
Great, great lead-in pastor. I thank God that we have Pastor Phillips, I mean Pastor Garber, and Pastor Phillips first.
Amen.
And Pastor Garber now, who, both men were men of vision. Pastor Phillips is the one who had the vision of this property, where he could be on Noliville Hill and look down on our church. And Pastor Garber has got a vision that God has given him to move us further on. So, thank you for your faithfulness and your dependence on God. Pastor talked about, we haven't had to ask you all for money for these soft expenses. And that's because you've been faithful and giving, you know? And one of the promises that's not in this book, this book cannot include all the promises from the Bible. But there's a promise in Luke 6:38. And it says, "Give, and it shall be given unto you." So that's a conditional promise. We have to give in order to have things given to us. And then, it's going to be given good measure, pressed down, shaken together, and running over. Think about getting a scoop of flour and how you shake it down and pack it down and keep putting more on it. God will do that. And He says, "Shall men give unto your bosom." You know, we didn't have to come to you and ask for money to pay for engineer studies or floodplain studies, because it's just amazing what men have given to us who aren't in this church, you know? And who are even government giving to us, you know? And we've been faithful, you've been faithful and giving since we had COVID. I mean, you know, we had to close down the church, we had to meet in the parking lot, and our giving stayed high. You know, we've met our mission's goals last year. We were down to 250,000? Less than 250,000 on our current mortgage on 34 acres of land plus this building, you know, all the buildings that we have. So, "Give, and it shall be given unto you good measure, pressed down, shaken together, running over, shall men give unto your bosom. For with the same measure you meet, with all it shall be measured to you again." So, just encourage you to stay faithful. Thank you.
Amen. Wonderful. Thank you, Brother Dan. Some, I think Brother Gary Vaughn has a question. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm confused about what you're meaning about floodplain. Is it talking about the runoff from rain? Or, because I don't see any rivers or...
That's correct. Yes, sir, there is a, there is the Nolanville River, or the Nolanville Creek. Nolan Creek runs on the backside of our property. And so, if you were to go to Belcad and you were to put our property search in, and if you were to back away and add on Belcad the floodway, you will see that the entirety of our community drains to our property. And not only our property, but the properties that are surrounding us. And so, it's a very, it's a very real affront to us. But we believe that, as we said, with a cut and fill, that we can create some more volume in that floodplain.
For most of us, that was already heat that came here from West Cliff. You guys remember, we had to build this property, this land up, just to get it up out of the floodplain. You guys remember that? That's the same thing, we're going to cut and fill. We're going to cut some of the dirt off the back end and build it up here to make sure that we have it up out of the floodplain. We're just building, when you say floodplain, the floodplain is where the water runoff, but what we're going to do is we're going to build it up where the water won't run. That's the ideal. It's build it up where we can build buildings on that property, alright?
Amen. Thank you. I believe Miss Swindell had a question. I've been told, yes, Miss Swindell? Yes, amen. We are implementing what's called the 1800 Fund. This property is located at 1800 West Highway 190. And so, the 1800 Fund will, you can give towards that, and that'll go towards the development of this property. We had a fund called the Jericho Fund when we were praying about purchasing other properties around us. We're asking the Lord to bring those walls down. Everything that was given towards that has been spent on developing this property and helping us to know exactly what to do. And anything that's left over, which is very little, is now being moved to this 1800 Fund and will be, will be operating under the 1800 Fund. That is our building project, okay? And moving forward, okay? We're still giving towards our capital stewardship program, what's called our debt reduction. And so, if you're interested in helping with that, you can help with the debt reduction. If you're interested in helping with future things, you're going to help with the 1800 Fund. Hopefully, all that'll be rolled in together, and it'll all become the 1800 Fund, but that's not quite the case at this point. fund, but that's not quite the case at this moment. So I am presenting to you today the eighteen-hundred fund. Thank you for that. And I have time for one more question, and then I've got something else to share with you, and we'll need to allow others to come into the worship service, alright? Where is that last question? I saw a hand. Anything? Oh, yes.
As the church renovations get started, will the orchestra pit be able to expand?
As the, will the orchestra pit be able to expand? There are some modifications in this remodel that are going to happen on the platform. The orchestra pit will be able to expand. There's room for that. We had a design to extend the platform out, but it cost, it cost us a lot of seats. And so, we determined that we'd rather have the seats, and we can do other things to try to make more room on the platform and in the congregation for things like the orchestra. But, great question, okay? Some may be asking, what about the, the winter storm, or the storm damage that took place in May? Where are we on that? How don't, how come we don't have a steeple? What about our roof? We are working diligently on this. We wanted to finalize a lot of these plans and, and preparation because colors of the roof may change. Different ideas for this building may come into place and that type of thing. And so, we were waiting a little bit. We were also delayed in some of our contractors, and so, we've, we've kind of been work, well, we haven't kind of, we've been working diligently through that. We have a day school here, and the only thing that separates the second floor from the roof is a suspended ceiling, ceiling tiles. And so, for them to operate on that roof and take the roof off while students are here on the second floor is not a great idea. And so, we only had a few windows to get this done. One of them would have been Christmas. Because of materials and because of certain delays, we weren't able to make that a realization. We've just been talking, and we have a proposal from a company that says that they will work after hours. So they'll begin their work at six PM and work until two or three in the morning to be able to replace the roof for us. We're very pleased with this idea because now we don't have to wait till spring break or summertime to get this work done, but we can get it done in the evening time. So would you pray for us as we're making those final decisions? We'll have a meeting with him, Lord willing, at the end of this week to finalize, to make sure that our expectations are met, and the fence lines and all those things are going to be done. There's plenty of painting that needs to go on outside, lots of power washing and that kind of thing that needs to take place. All of this was part of the storm damage from the hail and the wind that we received this past summer. And so, we're praying that those things will be done very soon. We appreciate your patience. I'm glad you're interested. Thank you for asking questions, and we just need to believe in the Lord our God, and so shall we be established, and so shall we prosper. Yes, ma'am. This is Phillips, of course.
I just have to say something. My husband's dream, I'm getting to see it.
And that's something. Well, we're glad you're here, and we're glad you're getting to see it, and we're glad you're excited. We're thrilled, and I'm thrilled, to continue that vision and to see what God's able to do. It broke my heart when they told us we might have to move this, move our facility because of what God has done here and because of the vision that the Lord gave your husband and you. And I'm so thankful that God's removed those obstacles and allowed us to move forward here, alright? Well, very good. We have five minutes till the worship service starts, and so, feel free to use the restrooms. If you didn't get a journal, we want to encourage you to get a journal. Also, our men in the back have, some of you like the, the calendar that fits on your refrigerator, like the all-in-one, all-one vision. Those are available. Our ushers will have those for you if you'd like to have one of those. We want you to have it and be aware of all that's going on in life of our church, alright? Let's pray together and we'll be dismissed. Lord, we love you. Thank you for the opportunity to share this vision with this church. Now, Lord, we believe you've led us here. You've brought us to this point. We believe you're not going to abandon us, and we're not going to abandon you. We're together with you, and you are with us. And so, we're depending upon thee, dear God, to see this come into fruition. Help us in our moments of fear, to look unto thee, to set ourselves to seek thy face, and we know that you will hear and help. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. God bless you. Thank you for being here.